Based on what's up with whatever. Whatever that was. I was just getting very far out, sort of. Want to try to put it out there. That's one thing I need to. This is how I was just trying to really decide about what I see in this. They can not make it work. That's strong. That's wrong, but it's good. Yeah. My plonks. Yeah, they. Okay, yeah, they are.
Sorry, you don't want to find that. I made it.
Actually, Trump. So very good though. That was something.
That was sweet.
He has to. Okay, very. So she probably right on. Oh, yeah. Thanks for that.
And I'm on to that. The moment we say. Yeah, we didn't.
Robles. You heard. No, no. College.
I was.
Hi, he moves six thirty and I'd like to call him to order. So said we're going to ask the head of this formers to help me some everybody in France. But allegedly.
I didn't say.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the power into this world with number ten.
So while they are exiting, it was there that you stand up so we see how it's you. Thank you, Dan. That was an amazing performance.
Ms. Spencer Benson?
Here.
Mr. Have a good one. Yeah. Congrats to your kids.
Here.
Uh, next on the agenda is the purple agenda on Dr. Forst.
Thank you, President Greenberg. Items approved by consent will not come up for discussion during the meeting, but will be approved when the agenda is adopted. This is possible since members of the governing board received the agenda along the backup materials at least twenty-four hours prior to the meeting and have had time to review and consider all items. Prior to the agenda being adopted, members of the governing board may ask that an item be removed from consent agenda and brought to the floor when we start. Any member of the audience who still have a public pocket prior to starting the meeting will be required to be on that agenda with the number five or five. I find offer a change that asks us.
Thank you. Prior to the start of the meeting, we received no public comment cards. So does any member of the governing board wish to read an item? Okay, no.
At seven.
Okay, that's. Seven, seven, eight. Resolution five minute. That will move to chief six. Was it? Mrs. Precious?
Yes, I would like to. This F eight. First.
Okay, so F six will become G seven. Um, F eight will become G eight and F four. Any else? Else? All right, seeing none, it's fine. We can jump. Jenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any person? Any extensions? Let's mention. Our agenda, next on the agenda, our governing board statement. Please warn.
Sorry. Obviously.
I'm also here today. Today. It is definitely. Um. First, my.
Good night.
Yeah. No. Any? Any news? I'm not going to be so brief. I did a lot of things. The last just been that fun. It's a hell of a primary. We do not just kindergarten. It's great thing to do because these kids get to come in. They give a whole bag of books to their family. And then the children themselves get to go take on Ted Moore. Great positive way to bring the whole community together. Boys and girls over there. There are many people within. Great. I was also at, um, the other shows I'm looking for. Tuesday, on the list of the Lucy contest at the Alphabeta every year. I get to start my, um, best mosquito, they're not very simple. Again, why don't we watch all these kids? Now let me cut that button for a bit thought. And the last thing is I would then have to get for the, where their two back to their big bird. For their, uh, PBIS award on the school. Flying me to the time where I didn't get through back in seventy-eight, we did a great action on the health. We can already make it. That's where the kid got picked up and worked together. Make our. My five tools, my positive questions, both positive and negative. Uh, we also, uh, and then whether you like to read them, you should know this thing, uh, reported justice, I did an NEA micro condensation class on reported justice. Again, right? About being accountable, but being able to come back to your school and your and your classroom with respect. People are going to be held accountable, so try to avoid the shame. And this is the same kind of thing, EGAF, where it's a positive intervention support. Get these kids debating for our belief, but they can wait that for. How are your actions, by the way, let's let's keep your self-esteem and build and teach each other. Great day. I'm glad we've been doing this my whole. And I started to get bored, so I think I'm done.
All right, given that our microphones aren't working, I will also keep it very brief and just welcome everyone to this meeting. I know it's been a busy school year and I can't believe we're already in November. And before we know it, it's going to be a winter break. So let's enjoy this meeting and get on to the rest of our semester.
Now, well, it's fine. I just now stopped. Like now those. Well, it's quite a good shot. It's the life. Yeah, we have. Sort of this time of life in boards are using.
Good evening, President Greenberg, governing board members, Dr. Corson, members of cabinet and attendees, both in person and virtual. Tonight, we have several recognitions to share with you. This evening, we'll be inviting our honorees to the front of the room for the recognition and photo. Please make your way up to the front of your room or front of the room when we call your name. Our first honorary tonight was the state finalist and candidate for the 2024 Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. This esteemed award recognizes K-12 teachers who demonstrate outstanding teaching skills and commitment to their students' success in STEM fields, innovative approaches, and fostering a love of learning. Furthermore, this achievement highlights the commitment and dedication to academic excellence. Please help me in, please join me in congratulating from Paradise Valley High School, Michelle Landrabel. Next is the recipient of the Paradise Valley Education Association's Recognition of Professional Standards Award for Teachers. The honoree this evening will be introduced by Josh Atkins, PVEA Vice President.
Good evening, President Greenberg, Dr. Corson, governing board and cabinet. My name is Josh Atkins and I am a proud member of the education association. Once a month, we need to recognize the Supreme League of D and M. Which stands for Preliminary National Recognizing Other Professionals. This evening, honored to recognize Tammy Fish, fifth grade teacher at Diplo as the recipient of the November 25th. This fish was nominated by three. There's a brief summary of the many things that share with me today. Tammy Fish is an extraordinary educator, invaluable asset to our field community. Her colleagues described her as a phenomenal teacher who was both warm and compassionate. Dedicated herself fully to the success of other students. She consistently goes above and beyond for her students. Always gave the best to help them. Helped with behavior and motivated them to her testing. Her ability to inspire methodical achievement is particularly important. The way Tammy can beat students, she can party by itself. Put on five, four, six. She makes that part. She is a pastor and a valuable friend to three persons who die. And positively impacts the virus. Tammy is the national leader of her team fighter who supports the entire campus. She takes on many additional roles, completing the many positions of powerful doubt coordinator. Where she brings it over to the entire program. Does it mean help us hours beyond the level she ordered? She also serves student help provider, such like for me here, and a member of the. Her exceptional motivation was to ensure her success. As she has the unique ability to be part of in support of her mission. Not for pleasure, but in dialogue with and exchange collaboration. This once called her, stated her dedication to global force of innovation. They need to run the best team. Time and other needs certainly, there's still being. I'm very proud of time.
Last this evening, but certainly not least, is the Paradise Valley Education Support Professional of the Month. Mr. Sean Webster, PVSEA President is here to make the presentation.
Okay, I'll talk loud and this way so if it works. Uh, good evening, President Greenberg, governing board, Dr. Corson, cabinet and guests. Uh, my name is Sean Webster, PVSEA President. And tonight, we are excited to present the November ESP of the Month Award to Maria Garcia, IT Database Engineer. Every single nomination we received from Maria was filled with genuine admiration, not just for her quality of work, but for the quality of her character. While many of us know her as an IT Database Engineer, Maria is much more. Maria is a person who makes the magic behind the scenes happen. She turned, she's the unsung hero working tirelessly in the IT department, ensuring that the systems we rely on every day to run smoothly. Her work is often unseen, but is absolutely essential, and it makes all of our jobs easier. Her colleagues describe her as someone who is consistent, who consistently goes above and beyond. She is, she has a rare combination of skills and an incredible attention to detail. Her far reaching vision and remarkable ability to identify and solve problems before they even become an issue for the rest of us. She does not just complete projects, she tackles them from every angle, thinking outside the box to deliver the best solutions for our schools. Perhaps the most important impactful, uh, testament to Maria's dedication is her work to developing critical tools that save staff time improving and improving accuracy. Whether it's creating streamlined queries for infinite campus or developing a fantastic new Friday data poke, which helps our elementary and middle schools easily track perfect attendance, Maria's, uh, direct support is impactful for our students and staff. While and beyond her technical skills, Maria is simply a delight to work with. She is truly a natural mentor and an excellent coworker and a true team player. Her kindness is and positive attitude and willingness to help, no matter how busy she is, inspires everyone around her. As one nominator put it, she treats you as if you're the most important person she is dealing with. Maria, thank you for being an invaluable part of PB Schools and it's my honor to recognize you tonight as ESP of the Month. And all we had to do to fix the microphone was talk about saying from IT.
And that President Greenberg concludes this evening's awards and recognitions.
What's, is it working? All right, next on the agenda is superintendent comments, Dr. Corson.
Thank you, President Greenberg. And first of all, thank you to our IT team who has been troubleshooting this for the past half hour. Thank you so much for your work on our issues tonight. Well, in PB Schools, we engage, inspire and nurture students through high quality instruction, meaningful educational opportunities and dynamic learning experiences. And one of those experiences is our district initiative PBIS. Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports is an evidence-based tiered framework designed to support students' behavioral and academic needs. While several of our schools received PBIS honors, tonight I want to recognize Desert Shadows Elementary School, which was recently recognized as the twenty-four twenty-five PBIS model school. This award highlights the dedication and collaboration of Desert Shadows Elementary students, staff and community as they have worked to foster a positive supportive school environment for all. So congratulations, Sand Sharks, and we wish you to keep up the great work. This week, we also proudly recognize National School Psychologist Week and celebrate the essential role our school psychologists play in supporting student learning across PB Schools. Through their expertise in assessment intervention and data-driven problem solving, they help identify student needs and remove barriers to academic success. By collaborating with teachers, families and support teams, our school psychologists ensure that every student has the opportunity to achieve their fullest academic potential. We are grateful for their dedication to helping students learn, grow and succeed every day. And congratulations to our governing board member, Tony Pantera, for earning both the Associate of Boardsmanship and Master of Boardsmanship recognitions from the Arizona School Boards Associations this year, completing an impressive total of eighty-four continuing education hours. These achievements reflect his continued dedication to professional growth and effective school board governance. And additionally, we want to congratulate governing board member Jessica Wani for completing ASBA's New Board Member Orientation Program, a foundational milestone toward advancing her leadership in service to our students and community. Thank you both for your commitment to PB Schools. And next, I'd like to congratulate our elementary and middle schools that have been recognized as some of the best public schools in the nation by U.S. News and World Report. The rankings are based on student performance on standardized tests. These rankings highlight the exceptional efforts of students, staff and our supportive community as we work together toward continued academic achievement. So congratulations go to our elementary schools, Boulder Creek, Copper Canyon, Desert Shadows, Desert Trails, Fireside, Greyhawk, Liberty, Mercury Mine, North Ranch, Pinnacle Peak Preparatory, Whale Run, Sandpiper, Sky Crossing, Sonoran Sky and Wildfire. And not to be left out, our middle schools at Desert Shadows, Explore, Mountain Trail, Pinnacle Peak Preparatory and Sunrise. Congratulations to all of our elementary and middle schools for that earned distinction. And that President Greenberg concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Corson. See if it's working, I can't tell. Okay, next on the agenda, we have items for approval. So first up is consideration approval administrative employment personnel actions. Um, Dr. Holmes is not with us, so I will turn it over to Ms. Copen.
Um, President Greenberg. Oh, it's mine. Good work, okay. Uh, President Greenberg, members of the board. Michaelina Arden, Arden Zoney is currently retired. She worked in our purchasing department from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-one and was a buyer three when she retired. She earned her associate's degree in business from Paradise Valley Community College. If approved, she will receive salary benefits in accordance with the COA bargaining agreement. We recommend you approve Ms. Arden Zoney to be the next purchasing supervisor.
Thank you, Ms. Wani. May I please have a motion to approve the administrative employment personnel actions as presented? Does any board member wish to make a comment? Have a question? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Lena, are you? Yes. Yes, stand up, stand up. So we. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is consideration and approval of proposed new courses and revisions for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven high school catalog. This is our second read. I will turn it over to Ms. Copen.
President Greenberg, governing board members, Dr. Corson and guests. Tonight is the second reading of the high school course recommendations, additions and revisions for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. Uh, there was a slight correction on our backup materials. All internship classes noted in our presentation should indicate that there's a required prerequisite since these courses are a culmination of the program. Uh, there were three internship courses that stated no on the prerequisite, and that has been corrected. Uh, we thank you for your consideration of these courses and we request approval from you this evening. We're happy to provide any additional information or answer any questions.
Um, Ms. Wani, may I please have a motion to approve the proposed new courses and revisions for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven high school catalog as presented?
So moved.
Does any board? Does any Board Member have any questions or comments? Nope. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is consideration to approve purchase from current district contract 2214 PV JOC for HVAC Central Upgrades at Horizon High School. Dr. Corson, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President Greenberg, members of the Governing Board, Cabinet and guests. Popular Mechanical has been selected to provide central plant upgrades utilizing cooperative job order contracting for mechanical services. The Horizon Chiller Plant is the heart of the school's HVAC system, providing cooling for the entire classroom building and auditorium. Excuse me. Age, equipment failure and compromised efficiency have caused the chiller plant to be unreliable on excessively hot days. Unfortunately, this has adversely impacted the learning environment on several occasions this summer. The plant is original to the building and the chillers are 20 years old and critical parts to repair are now unavailable. The scope of work includes the removal of the two existing chillers, pumps and control systems, followed by the installation of two new water-cooled chillers, variable frequency drives and upgraded electrical panels. Supporting infrastructure such as piping, concrete pads, insulation and ventilation, largely original to the 1980 construction, will be rebuilt or replaced to ensure a durable, watertight and efficient installation. We will also upgrade plant components, including the electrical system, pumps and piping to improve efficiency. In summary, this project will modernize the chiller plant to code requirements and support reliable cooling for the facility for decades to come. This, of course, would not be possible without the support of our voters and bond dollars that we receive for critical projects such as these. Dr. Davis, Director of Facilities, is here to answer any specific questions about this project, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Ms. Wani. May I please have a motion to approve the purchase from current district contract 2214 PV JOC for HVAC Central Upgrades at Horizon High School as presented?
So moved.
Does any Board Member have any comments or questions? Or Dr. Davis, Dr. Corson? Yes, Dr. Lynn?
So I know we had a couple notices of these going down over the summer, which was not fun for Horizon. But what is the length of time that, or when is this going to happen? Is it going to be a summer project? Is this going to be during the school year? And will it take our heating, which is now becoming the important part, away from that school?
Right, no, it will be a summer project.
Perfect, thank you for the clarity.
Is anybody else, Mrs. Christensen?
She kind of alluded to my question. Are there concerns with heating in that school? And are students going to be affected with the heat?
Excellent question, and no, the heating system at this point is fully operational. No.
Sorry, to go off of that question, is it in a separate location or are they co-localized together in the same?
They are in a separate location. The Horizon Heating System is a boiler system.
Now, my last question. I know that this is a must, because if you don't have proper heating and cooling, it's very difficult to learn. I'm just wondering about that nearly $3 million price tag, is that typical? Did we get multiple quotes? I know we don't normally because of job order contracts, but how did we come up with that figure?
So we are procuring this through the job order contract. This is a major renovation, certainly the largest renovation of an HVAC plant that has occurred in my role. We are from the pipes to the foundation, to the ceiling, to the electrical, to the components. It is going to completely modernize the facility and make it much more reliable than its current state.
And what would the lifecycle be of the lifetime? I'm not sure what the question is, but how long will this last?
Yeah, when do we have to do this again? Hopefully not for a very long time. But on the short end, 15 years. On the upper end, 20, 25 years.
Do you anticipate any cost savings in electricity?
Absolutely. This is replacing a two-decade-old system. And there have been incredible advancements in efficiencies. In fact, we will qualify for some APS rebates on this project because of some of the efficiency additions to the project.
And also potentially opportunity for even improved ventilation, I would imagine, with air filters and those kinds of things and better air quality for our students. So, thank you.
Anybody else have any other, Dr. Lynn?
I do have one more. Can you again clarify what buildings will be affected? And then that might change my question.
Yeah, so it's the classroom building, which is the biggest building on that campus and the auditorium.
Okay, so I guess my question is, I know Horizon is heavily used towards the end of the summer by our community, as well as over the summer for different things. So have we thought through and began to engage those community partners to let them know there are other spaces, hopefully around our campus that's going to accommodate them?
Absolutely, in fact, had a discussion with Principal Stroffus today about that very fact. And so, yeah, we'll be planning to be without AC for a portion of the summer.
Okay, and are we actively then reaching out to those partners that are used to working with us?
Yes, at the kind of mid-December, we sit down with our community ed stakeholders, our parent groups, really anyone who's kind of a consistent member of our, consistent renter of our facilities. And yeah, give them kind of the lay of the land as to what our summer projects are going to be. So we can find good places for them.
Thinking about that a little further, just for reference for myself, what are the other campuses that would be able to hold the capacity for the same as Horizon?
So we would probably refer to another high school.
Okay.
Can there be a PV this year or not?
Yeah. Anybody else? Mr. Pantera?
Just very thankful for the district voters who, you know, made this bond money possible. I can't imagine how the system would go even two, three more years down the road. It's not going to happen, but without the support of our communities, we wouldn't have this great, great and very needed upgrade. Thank you voters.
Anybody else? No, I just want to, I was going to say exactly what Mr. Pantera said. I mean, you know, Tuesday was election day and there were several bond and override measures for districts throughout Arizona, many passed, many didn't. And, you know, we remain very grateful to our voters for supporting us in this way because this is one of those projects we must do, no matter what happens. And it is, you know, it's just great that we are able to tap on funds to be able to do it. Anybody else? Are we ready to vote? Okay, thank you, Dr. Davis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, the Board will discuss, consider and give direction on voting on the bylaw change proposal from the Arizona School Boards Association. The proposal, which came through the Governance Committee of the ASBA and the Board of Directors also recommends, must be approved by two-thirds of the ASBA member boards to become effective. And after discussion, we will vote and give direction to our Board Secretary to vote in the manner we approve. So Ms. Wani, please have a motion to approve the bylaw change proposal from the Arizona School Boards Association as discussed and provide direction to the Board Secretary to vote in the manner we approve.
So moved.
Does any Board Member wish to make any comments?
Well, I would. This particular bylaws is one big package, okay? And maybe some of the parts on it are not as perfect as we would like them. But to consider that, leave it the way it is now before any changes are made, I don't think it's a good idea. I like some of these positive, forward-thinking steps that they're taking in this, in this package. I'd hate to throw the whole thing out, because there's a couple of things we don't maybe agree on.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera. Anybody else? Ms. Wani?
Sure. So we did have an opportunity to discuss and review these proposed changes in much greater detail during a study session, is that correct? Right? And I believe some of the things that we identified as either we needed some clarifications or, you know, we just really weren't sure why the change was being proposed in the first place. Some of it's pretty, I think, evident, but some of it wasn't so much. And I believe, was there an opportunity to get any insight clarification on some of the things we talked about?
Yeah, I had, you know, based on the conversation we had, I had sent Ellen, who is the Executive Director, sorry, of the ASBA, a pretty long, you know, summary of questions we had, and she responded back. So I don't know, do you want me to just go through?
I mean, I don't know, well, I'll just speak candidly. I am not in favor of these changes. So I don't really want it, unless anybody else wants to go through them. I don't feel like I want to be the person to waste anyone's time unless they want to go through them. I think the biggest thing that's problematic for me has to do with the, and I'm trying to find the exact spot so I can make sure I'm not speaking in code and I can speak out loud about the actual provision that I think is incredibly problematic. Okay, so Section 9, they've added under vacancies and removal from office. It's 9.3, which would be an entirely new sub-provision to the section. And I'm just going to read it out loud. "Any officer or director may be removed by a two-thirds vote of Board of Directors and in consultation with the County School Board. Members for actions deemed contrary to the Code of Conduct in the ASBA's bylaws are conduct deemed detrimental to the association after a hearing in due process." A couple of things that I think are problematic with this provision is, number one, nowhere within the bylaws or even referenced in the bylaws is this Code of Conduct that they're referring to. So we don't know what that means, that it could be anything, truly. So I find that problematic. And a second thing that I think is problematic, well, I mean also, or conduct deemed detrimental to the association, that's an incredibly vague and broad, very subjective, I think, term to put in there, it's not defined anywhere. And also, hearing in due process. That's great, I love those words, but what does that mean? Who's overseeing this hearing? What does this due process look like? What is the timeline for this due process? So, you know, officers and directors, my understanding, or at least the officers, right, they are voted on statewide by all members. And so those individuals have been voted in by that body. And then this new provision gives not those individuals the right to remove them, but two-thirds of the Board of Directors with really whatever they want to do. And so that in and of itself, I think for me, is problematic enough that I'm going to be voting them.
Anybody else? Because I can jump in. Nobody else has any questions or comments? I agree with Ms. Wani. I was a little disappointed with the response we received. And I think it was really more coming from a place that we have to get these out to the membership. So that, you know, many of the comments we brought up were kind of like, yeah, no, you know, fix it and post type of thing. And that's not going to happen with bylaws. So I was concerned, there were some things that, the comments were, well, we do have that in policy, but I don't know that the ASBA policy manual is available to everybody, so it's hard to know exactly what's there. I appreciate, I think we all do, that they, you know, really tried to move a lot of things forward with these. The piece that Ms. Wani just brought up is incredibly problematic to me. I do not believe, I don't care what, you know, how an organization is put together, and ASBA is a 501(c)(3), but I strongly believe that somebody who was voted in by a portion of the membership, whatever that is, whether it's statewide or countywide, if you're putting them to consideration for a moment, they should be removed in some way by the body that brought them in. I think it's, you know, it's one to say, if we vote on, say, a secretary and somebody just doesn't like the job they're doing, to say that the officers are, you know, given the authority to remove that person when the body itself wouldn't. And there certainly could be provisions in here that allow the membership in total to do that. There's a few other things in here that I, they work to a point, but I think they could work better. And so I do feel that these haven't quite hit prime time for me yet. So I, again, I really wish they had given this to us article by article. I really do. I think so much of this we'd all be fine with. But I think there's just pieces here that are, that remain problematic. And I have a fear, you know, 9.3 particularly, but I have a concern that for some of these others, they might not hold up legally. And I don't think that's wise to put something in bylaws of an organization that could be challenged. I think the due diligence should have been maybe a little bit earlier.
They might consider adding into their next bylaw revision that their bylaw revisions will be approved or put forth to members article by article and not as a full package, if any were to us.
Well, in that, I mean, the way it's done currently is that the bylaws may be amended or repealed, and when it's adopted by a vote of two-thirds in the member board using an electronic vote of the membership, using a procedure adopted by the Board of Directors. So this decision to do it as an all or nothing, according to this, came from the board. Those are my thoughts. I, again, I really wish that it was done in that way.
And as it stands now, then, if a director or somebody that needs to be removed, is there any process to get rid of a person that's really harming the organization? What's the remedy for that, then? This at least would be a remedy for, it does talk about consulting the counties these people come from. It's not just the two-thirds of the board, but they have to consult with their county representatives.
Well, I think the counties make sense if you're talking about the county directors. I'm not sure county consulting with the members of the county of a statewide. Well, I mean, you know, if somebody's elected and they happen to be a board member in Pima, according to this provision, they're only going to go back to board members in Pima for that person. You know, I, I do think there needs to be a provision. I don't disagree with that. I think any organization needs to have a provision in its bylaws to, you know, in essence, recall or revoke or, you know, however that needs to work. I just don't agree with this process and I am concerned that there are some holes in this. But if this were to happen, if it plays out, it's approved and it happens, I'm not sure ASBA wouldn't be challenged on it. I don't know. Those are my thoughts. As an attorney?
I, that is, I mean, that's a good point. I mean, truly, I don't think that this could withstand muster, honestly, if somebody were to be removed and they wanted to challenge it. It's, what, I mean, what is their code? We don't even know if we've moved in the code, I mean, right? Like, I don't know what their Code of Conduct is. Like, I, it just, to me, this is the big, I think. And look, if we're mistaken and there is a Code of Conduct somewhere written in these four pages and we're missing it, I mean, but I mean, I scoured it, I don't see it anywhere. And I think that in and of itself would call into question the legality of that provision. If anybody wanted to challenge it, I think, I don't know that they would. I don't know that this ASBA policy would hold up, honestly.
Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? Okay, it has been moved. So a vote aye means we approve, a vote nay, say aye. Any abstentions? Motion fails, I guess it would be one of two or nays. So that would be directing the Board Secretary to not vote in favor. However, it's coming up on their website. However, it's coming up on their website, but to not approve the.
Yeah, the, who the secretary is, yeah. Pardon, our secretary, right?
Yeah, but, but the direction would be to vote, however, no vote appears on the ASBA website. Okay. Um, thank you, next on the agenda is gifts and donations, we had several. I'd like to highlight the, we had some folks giving to multiple schools. Ethel, the Intertech Partners gave $1,000 for their rewards for students. On Trismal, another side, PTO gave two, um, donations on cash. Uh, $20,185 for turf or undersolar panel structure, and just over $15,000 for the shade structure by the Long Jump area. And, um, Greenway Middle School, as well as at Sunrise Middle School, Valley Guardians gave each school $1,000 for PBIS, um, initiatives and incentives. Um, Greenway also received $15,000 from North Star Foundation, and North Canyon received $10,000 from North Star Foundation. At Greenway, it was a donation for students and staff. And at North Canyon, if I did, I meant North Canyon, it was for teacher incentives and recognitions. Horizon High School, the Sturow Booster Group gave $6,700 for transportation from the Sturow, Sturow Leadership Conference. Horizon High School, uh, Kibbe High School, Clinical High School and Shadow Mountain High School also received $2,000 each from Jostones for faculty appreciation and staff recognition. Mount Trans Middle School, Amy McCaffrey gave $5,000 for scholarships for sports clubs and field trips. KV High School received, excuse me, um, just over $1,600 from Amy McCaffrey's football branch. Paradise Valley Unified School District Festival Sports, um, received just over $29,826 in non-cash donations from BSN Sports. Custom basketball uniforms for our middle school and high school festival sports programs. Uh, Red School received a non-cash donation of $9,000 from Smith, which is Shadow Mountain Area Sports Home, for LED school, school board for the baseball field, including labor and installation. And that's our large donations. Um, we thank all of the donors, um, and Ms. Wani, may I have a motion to accept the gifts and donations, please?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? That was quite a lot. Thank you to any donor who's here, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any extensions, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, next on the agenda, we have items that were moved from the consent agenda. So first will be what was F seven and now is G six. This is consideration approval of Resolution 593, an amended affiliation agreement between Mayo Clinic and Paradise Valley Unified School District. Dr. Corson, I'm going to throw all of these to you, and if you need to throw them elsewhere, I'm going to give that to you.
All right, President Greenberg, thank you so much, and governing board members. So this, uh, resolution is an agreement, an amended agreement between Mayo Clinic and Paradise Valley Schools, uh, regarding the Health Careers Education Certified Nursing Assistant Program within the district's career and technical education program. Under the new terms of this agreement, Mayo Clinic will provide clinical opportunities and access to its hospital for our pre-owned students to gain hands-on experience in patient-centered care. The previous agreement that we had with Mayo Clinic only allowed for observation. So, uh, this provides a wonderful opportunity for our students to gain hands-on experiences in this environment, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you, Dr. Corson, and Ms. Wani, you have a motion to approve Resolution 593, an amended affiliation agreement between Mayo Clinic and Paradise Valley Unified School District.
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make a comment? Dr. Lynn?
So I remember at the end of my undergraduate, my biotech professor told me, you, most of you in the room will change your career seven times. And I thought, dear goodness, that was never going to happen. I had just started my hands-on research experience and the company I would get hired in, and I thought there was no way I was ever leaving this job. This was exactly what I wanted to do, working in genomics, hand-on, hands-on doing research. Just a few years in, I already started thinking to the next part of my career, knowing I wanted to step away from the bench and realized he was absolutely correct, that that hands-on experience told me I loved science, but there were other ways I could give back in science and work in the field that I was in. I transitioned to education and now work in the administrative space. Um, so it was valuable to hear that, but not believe it, that hands-on experience is invaluable. And I, I truly stand behind this. But the employer that is part of this, um, that's been named is also my employer, and so I'll have to not vote on such action because, um, I am in conflict with such an amazing thing. But I am happy that PV is continuing to support something like this and transitions the hands-on aspect of it, which I think is invaluable for students really trying to figure out where in the career they're going and what path they're going to head on, even if they do go on to nursing where they want to go in it.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Any extensions?
I abstain.
Thank you, the motion passes four zero with one extension. Next on the agenda, um, was former item F six, now G seven. This is consideration approval of leadership, um, secondary administration slash certified employee travel request, Dr. Corson.
Uh, President Greenberg, we are seeking approval to send Carly Shank, a certified staff member from North Canyon High School to the International Baccalaureate Visual Arts Conference in Los Angeles, California, from January seventeenth through the nineteenth in 2026. This professional learning experience will connect Ms. Shank with IB educators from around the world to explore best practices in visual arts instruction, assessment, and integration of technology to enhance student engagement and creativity. The conference's emphasis on inquiry-based learning and authentic assessment directly supports IB program goals and is expected to strengthen instructional quality, leading to improved student outcomes, such as higher achievement on IB visual arts assessments and increased student success in meeting IB diploma requirements. The transfer of innovative instructional strategies and assessment techniques into the classroom contributes to improved teaching effectiveness, deeper student understanding, and stronger performance on both internal and external evaluations. The total estimated cost of just over $2,000 covering registration, travel, meals, lodging, and substitute coverage will be paid from North Canyon High School's International Baccalaureate Fund. This will be Mrs. Shank's first time attending the IB Visual Arts Conference, and we are recommending approval of the seat.
Thank you, Dr. Corson, Ms. Wani, may I have a motion to approve the secondary travel request as presented?
So moved.
Does any board member wish to make any comment? Mrs. Christensen?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Corson, for the explanation. While it does sound like an amazing opportunity, um, I would like to understand a little bit better how it will directly affect student achievement and what data shows that this particular conference will, will increase student outcomes. Um, since it seems this employee's never been to this conference, do we have data in the, that shows this has helped in the past?
Uh, yeah, Ms. Christensen, thank you so much for your question. We don't have direct data on whether or not this particular conference has impacted, uh, specifically past instructors in the arts. What we do know is conferences like this are sponsored by and run by International Baccalaureate, which is the courses that she does teach, and students are required to take, uh, take IB exams as part of these courses. And so we're confident that the instruction that IB and the professional development that IB Institute is providing their instructors will directly align to improve her, her teaching practices and then ultimately impact student achievement.
Mrs. Christensen? Yes, um, thank you, Dr. Corson, while it does sound like an amazing program, I will continue to pull things such as out-of-state travel out of consent because we do have declining enrollment, meaning declining revenue. And while these sound like wonderful opportunities, and I love continuing education, I would really ask the district to start looking at things where we can bring people there in. I under, I do understand that this is a special program and, um, for, for the IB, because not, not everybody, um, not everybody is, participates in this program, so it is very specialized, and I do get that, but we keep thanking our taxpayers, but we need to thank our taxpayers by being fiscally responsible and, and limit the amount of out-of-state travel we do.
Anybody else? Mr. Pantera?
As you said, these funds come from their inter-baccalaureate budget, right?
Uh, Mr. Pantera, funds are provided for North Canyon for everything from international baccalaureate registration fees, which we are required to pay in order to have that program, as well as IB is part of their, uh, uh, part of their platform does require us to provide professional development, uh, for teachers, and so funds are allocated specifically to North Canyon High School for professional development relative to international baccalaureate.
That's what I thought, and, and it's the only high school in the district, of course, because you're only allowed one high school that's inter-baccalaureate, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Pantera.
Do you think that a lot of people come from other, outside the district and other places to come to that school because of the IB program?
We do receive some open enrollments, uh, both in-district students that attend North Canyon from our in-house high schools, as well as, uh, other high schools in the valley oftentimes come for the international baccalaureate. Uh, it is a fairly competitive program to get in, so not all students want to participate in an international baccalaureate. And we do find that neighboring, uh, school districts do have international baccalaureate programs as well. So we don't receive a lot of open enrollments from other districts, but internally, we do receive students that wish to participate in that program and decide to leave their home school for North Canyon.
And then what's their success rate of people who've gone through this program and, when they go to college and, and beyond? Is that pretty high success after they go through this program, successful?
Yeah, without having that number in the back of my head, most students who venture through our international baccalaureate program are destined to, uh, colleges, university, uh, and programs, uh, some of the most elite colleges and universities.
Yeah, I know some students that, you know, because I used to teach right at Eagle Ridge, and some of them went to the program, and they said, after they got through the program, those first three years of college were like, no big deal, because the program is so, um, uh, said so much, uh, rigor to it.
Yeah, Mr. Pantera, you know, the foundation for that program is for college preparation. It's one of the most rigorous programs that you'll find, uh, and it does, uh, prepare students for that university, college experience.
Well, thank you.
So anybody else, uh, Mr. Christensen?
Yeah. So, the method of payments as North Canyon's High School International Baccalaureate MNO Fund will cover all the costs are, are, based on Mr. Pantera's question, does that mean there are no taxpayer dollars going in to this? Because maintenance and operation tends to be taxpayer-funded.
Uh, I, I would need to verify the funding source, uh, from Ms. Berg, unfortunately, she's not here, but I do think it's probably fair to say that we do allocate MNO dollars to support the IB program. So, uh, so you would be correct in that, Ms. Christian.
Yeah, because it does say MNO here. Um, I just have a request for future, that we start when, I, I know we've approved a lot of people to go out of town, I would love to see some metrics and to start really getting some measures on these, because it, I think it's wonderful. And when I was working for Fortune 100 companies, we would send people out of state all the time for things like this, but not when we had declining revenues. We brought things in-house and we, I just want to be certain that we are being very responsible with taxpayer funds. But thank you for answering all my questions.
Ms. Wani?
So to that, to kind of follow up, um, on, um, Ms. Christensen's questions, uh, um, would I be correct in assuming that there are, like, the professional development for, um, baccalaureate program is sort of specialized? Um, and maybe I would imagine there's not like a one-size-fits-all that would be used, you know, professional development that would satisfy sort of the requirements? Is that kind of fair to say?
Yeah, you, you, you are correct, Ms. Wani, this, because it is sponsored by the International, uh, Baccalaureate Conference, the professional development that they're delivering is very specific and tailored to teachers who teach IB courses. So it's not the general professional development that you might find elsewhere that covers general strategies. This is very tailored to the specific teachers who teach this course.
And, um, do you have, do you know if other, um, like some of our neighboring districts that also ha, house this program in one of their high schools, do you know if this is a conference that, that they send, uh, their professionals to?
Ms. Wani, I don't know whether or not they sent to this specific conference. I do know, though, that other IB conferences, uh, of other subject areas are frequented by other district teachers who attend these conferences just to keep themselves professionally up to date, uh, to be able to be most effective they can in IB. But to this specific conference, I don't have that information.
And to your knowledge, is there, is, is, would there be an option to bring in-house? That would be less expensive? I mean, is that even something that we would be able to vet out or potentially look into in the future?
Uh, Ms. Wani, uh, certainly, we can always explore those options. What's challenging is that, uh, this is a particular conference that brings together people from across, across the country, and really a number of experts across the field, in this case, arts. And so it's very challenging to replicate that at the cost. So we could potentially bring in a single individual to provide professional development, but it would not be the same kind of experience that they would get with a network of.
And learning and, um, and all of that. And so, um, if, if we do approve this, um, this evening, this, um, this travel, would, is there an opportunity for us to maybe get a little bit of feedback and, and to hear about what this experience is like? So, you know, again, just in thinking about future, um, travel requests, we, we can get that feedback? If that's something that we can.
Certainly, we would be happy to provide that, that's of interest to us as well. We always like to check in with the people who attend various workshops and conferences to see how that information is going to be used productively. We make an effort to also think about how we, uh, replicate that experience for others who have not been able to attend that conference. So it's not just about one person receiving the expertise, but how we can share that among others. And so our interest in that is yours as well. So we'll be happy to provide that information to the governing board.
Thank you, that would be great. And just my last question, um, so going back to the, the funding, so when you set, and I know Jill's not here, but to your knowledge, is there, there's a budget I, like presumably set every year for this specific purpose?
Um, Ms. Wani, the, the budget is set to, uh, for North Canyon specifically, and that budget, for the most part, goes to pay for registration as well as professional development. So it doesn't necessarily go to pay for this specific conference, but.
There's a bucket of funds allocated for professional development that meets these requirements, and, and we are within our budget.
You are correct.
Thank you.
Dr. Lynn?
So I wanted to get back to one of Ms. Christensen's comments about kind of keeping track. So, so obviously, you know, have, we have PTOs and PTA's that support people also going to conferences as well. And we've obviously seen, at least at my daughter's school, people come, go to conferences, and then they may leave and go to another district. And so that knowledge is sometimes kind of lost, other than the word of mouth that might be told. Are we, or do we have any metrics in place to track maybe what sessions people went to and kind of feedback on those different sessions? So that when we send people to the same conference in a different year, that may have some reoccurring sessions, we have had people already attend that session, so they may attend a different session, either as a new individual going, or as the same person maybe re-going another year or a few years out. Are we keeping track of that, or are the schools kind of having summaries of that? I know we do it at our level professionally and keep track of what sessions we're going to, and try not to overlap when multiple of us are at the same conference in the same session, even though we all really want to go to the same session. We will, you know, rock, paper, scissors, and go to a different session. Do we keep those metrics? And if we don't, can we start doing so?
Yeah, so, Dr. Lynn, uh, oftentimes what happens when multiple people are attending the same conference in the same year, uh, they will oftentimes look at the needs of their school or needs of, uh, the department in that case, and they will kind of divvy up the different sessions that exist to make sure that they get as wide of a span as possible into the, uh, conference sessions that are going to be most applicable to, uh, that particular school or department. We don't have a mechanism in place to track that over time. Oftentimes, the conference sessions change from one year to the next, uh, depending on the topic of the year or the emphasis of that year. And so we have not tracked that, but I would be very interested. And so we have not tracked that, but I would be very interested to hear how you might do that in another industry.
Yeah, I think it's just keeping track of, you know, so AI is the hot topic and it has been for about three years in our industry, so we're very conscious of trying to maybe go to sessions that are something other than AI, given that AI is. A constantly reoccurring topic right now, so we may choose to visit a less popular session, though still very interesting in our field. Um to get a sense of what's happening outside the field because so many people are safe playing in the same pool. Right now in the research space, so we may visit other research spaces to see what they're doing and how they're engaging and how we might. Cross-pollinate with the work we do in one space to the work they're doing in that other space and have conversations about these sessions and. Kind of begin to plan our research in that space. So I'm just wondering if we're we're keeping track or people just writing summaries of what they're doing, just so those can be passed on, especially if we have a teacher. Move on to a leadership role and no longer be at that school or move on to a different district, that knowledge is just lost. When that happens, it's they haven't written it down or. Telling someone is not the same as putting it down on paper. And while I don't want to add a burden to our teachers, it would be great to keep at least some of that knowledge in some capacity. In a written form for us to either not replicate in future years if there are repeat sessions. Or just for someone to pick it up and be like, well, what what were they focusing on before I took over this role in this particular position? Because this teacher has left. This particular role. So what what was the teacher's focus? And I think it gives us a sense, especially in these specialty programs. Where those teachers kind of had their focus and kind of where the students coming into them at.
So, thank you for that suggestion. Does anybody else have any other questions, comments? Mrs. Christiansen?
Just one comment. Um. Having worked for small and very large companies, what we tend to do is um. To minimize cost is to seek out conferences that have online versions. And I know everybody likes to go in person because it's much more fun and I do and I have heard, oh, you get more out of it. You can still get a lot of. Information out on the online versions of some of these conferences. While some of them may not offer that, I know some of the larger conferences do, and I really think we should consider we have. Declining revenue in our district that we should start considering those options as well.
Ms. Christiansen, I I do appreciate that. We do uh make every effort to prioritize online uh conferences first. That is our first go-to. When those are available.
This is visual, this is like arts, visual arts, right?
This is. This particular one is, yes. Anybody else? Dr. Lim?
I just want to add to that uh for Ms. Christiansen. So a lot of the conferences did go virtual and unfortunately many are reverting back to fully in person. It's just a part of at least my field. Very few are are virtual in any capacity. Um and there's reasons for that to get people together, network, conversations. Um so I wish I could say virtual options were still very available out there, but besides webinars and things like that that are often free from different spaces. The actual big conferences are re-encouraging people to come in person, picking sometimes very expensive cities, which many of us are. Constantly making very obvious. I I appreciate that this one is actually just local to us in California, so that will hopefully reduce the cost. Um given it's it's a closer venue than maybe Boston or New York.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion passes four to one. Next on the agenda is. Uh former F eight, now G eight, uh consideration approval curriculum and instruction certified. Uh travel requests. Ms. Copen?
Uh, President Gray, this item is requesting approval of out-of-state travel. For two of our certified art staff from Horizon High School to attend the NAEK National Convention in Chicago, Illinois. On March fifth through the seventh, twenty twenty-six. Uh, the NAE um annual event is recognized as the largest gathering of visual arts education professionals in the world. And it provides an unparalleled opportunity for um these teachers' professional growth, collaboration and innovation in teaching. Um, this, the cost of this um travel is a little over approximate five thousand dollars and is being funded with Horizon's dual enrollment budget. These funds are often used to fund efforts that improve our CCRI indicators. Um, these two particular teachers that are requesting to go, one is the Fine Arts Department. Uh Chair or Leader and the other teacher is also uh one of our AP teachers and Advanced Arts Teachers. So um two of the metrics that we're looking at closely for these two particular instructors. Um, both of them would be involved in our um AP exams that we're always trying to increase passing rates. Um for for those to uh for that indicator and our CCRI points for their uh high school. And um they would also both be very involved in improving or increasing, excuse me, the art seals. Um for uh graduates. And so both of these teachers would be involved in uh the capstone projects that those students have to exhibit. That warrant the um the uh credential with the state. So we're hoping that those are two metrics that we can look at um as as partially being influenced by their, what they bring home. And um Director Rye has worked with both instructors because this is a national conference. There's lots of options to choose from. And so Director Rye has worked with both teachers to um pre-select things they'll be attending um that directly align with those um those initiatives. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Copen. Um, Ms. Wanny, may I please, sorry. Having this electronically is interesting. Um, uh, may I please have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction certified travel request as presented? Some of the city board member wish to make a comment. Ms. Christiansen?
When we go to these out-of-state conferences, do we um? Do we have a cap on per di- do we have per diems like? Corporates corporate um individuals do or how does that work? Because sometimes we pick the expensive. Um hotels that they're given at, and I know that's always ideal because then you don't have to. Walk as far and things like that, but sometimes there are less expensive options for lodging and things like that. How how does that work? Do do you have a cap and is it based on the city?
Yes, Ms. Christiansen. Um, so we are very frugal and we look for the options that are going to, of course, um not cost as much as others. Um often the um where the conference is being held, sometimes they will offer a reduced rate in the hotel, so we're always looking for that. If those uh fill up and we don't, we miss out on that option, they often have overflow hotels that often uh give us a better rate than than a tourist. Um, yes, but like food has a per diem by city um per day, and so this would fall under that as well. Um, travel, we're uh usual, this one will be by air, so we look for um and we. We're bringing this to the board early. Uh it was marked, it's in March, but that allows us to take um ad infinitum early bird special registrations. And then often if we can get airline um booked at a time, it reduces costs than waiting till the date. So it gives us, we try to um get these approved as far as we can in advance so we can get better pricing on things like that that give us some little bit of. Cost relief if we're, we book them in advance. Um, I'm just looking at my costs here. And then, of course, for these, the teacher's substitute costs are set per day by district. Um, and then we have to estimate things like ground travel and things like that, but um. Not necessarily a cap, but we do try to do all of those things to mitigate cost.
Well, typically when you come to the board and and ask for these things, there there is a dollar amount associated with that. What happens if they over? They go over that? Do they have to pay out of their own pocket or does the district, because it's been approved by the governing board, we just cover it? What what if they go like a thousand over the budget to be eat at the finest steakhouse? I'm just, I'm just wondering how that works processes um for if it's way over the amount that we approved for.
Absolutely, Mrs. Christiansen. Uh in an example like that for food, no, it is a per day per diem. And so if they choose to go over that, then that is at their own cost. We cannot reimburse over the the per diem.
Does anybody else have any of the, Dr. Lim?
I do just want to make a comment on the way we got this one. So it says how the conference is essential for their role, which is important, but the second one already starts to outline how they plan to disseminate this information. Including using Google Drive and things like that. I would love to see more of that and us actually tracking that in a more formal way, even if it's just at the school site. To have that and have that retained memory in a written form. I think one, seeing it here and knowing why they're going and how they're going to disseminate it. Really makes a difference on knowing what impact it's going to have and how they're going to bring it back to our district. I know the last one is a one-off program in our district. But obviously even the things coming out of that may be helpful to some of our other top-tier programs. So the knowledge even gained from the last one we discussed might be able to help some of our our high achieving schools and all of our schools with honors programs and things like that throughout the district just by disseminating that knowledge and. Uh insight that comes from it. So I would love to see more of that formally in both this information and have us capture that in long term.
Ms. Wanny? Out here, Ms. Christiansen?
Um, question for either Dr. Corson or Ms. Copen. Do we have a formal train the trainer program in PB schools? I, that's what we typically use in in the business world. Is is there something like? Like that? So as uh Dr. Lim has been alluding to, that we that we can absolutely take this information that we're. Getting and then pass it on to others. I know it's difficult, but I mean, if you're going to go out of state travel and we're tax on the. Taxpayers dime, um it's many teachers should be benefit fitting.
Yes, Ms. Christiansen, that that's a wonderful question, and that is a concern with us. If we're investing in these teachers, how can they benefit the organization at a a bigger level or a greater level? Um, so these teachers, it it's kind of catered to what conference they're going to, to what teachers they would work with, but. For this particular travel, we would be using our PLC um kind of structures to help uh and they have a department, so the department leader would be attending. And so there they create those agendas and uh for their departments. Um, we're hoping, uh they they mentioned working with Director Rye to um ask what other ways could they talk to other teachers from other schools? Because they often get together as a fine arts department and then they would also be willing to work with any teacher that took particular interest. They would work with them one-on-one. So those are our plans right now to to spread the knowledge um and just widen out uh, you know, what we're getting out of that cost.
Mr. Pantera?
I'd like to add on to that. I've been to some of these conferences like Avid conferences or Summit conferences. One of the requirements when you go to the conference. Is you come back and you have to teach so many workshops at your school or for your uh department. That's built right into the whole process. So I've done that many times. I've seen it done many times. It's not uncommon that we do that here.
Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Um, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? The motion passes four one. Uh, last on our agenda was a former item F thirteen, now G nine. This is consideration. To approve purchase from current IGPA Cooperative Contract twenty-one oh six P JOC for roofing upgrades at Shadow Mountain. That's the right one? Yes. Ms. Christiansen, okay. Um, and I will. Ask. I'm happy to take that on. Thank you. Doctor. Thank you, President Greenberg. Uh, Progressive Roofing has been selected to provide roof upgrades at Shadow Mountain High School. Services will be procured through a one GPA cooperative contract. The roof on Shadow Mountain High School's academic building, which is over twenty years old, is out of warranty. Has numerous leaks despite our best preventative maintenance efforts. Many of these leaks were exposed after the last rainstorms. Unfortunately, a tear down or replacement of the current roof is not an option as solar panels are installed throughout. And cannot be removed without significant additional cost. In lieu of a full replacement, the emulsion and fabric solution will repair and seal the roof to address current leaks. Repair damage and protect the roof from further water intrusion for many years. A five-year warranty is included. This again, of course, would not be possible without the support of our voters and bond dollars that we receive for critical projects such as these when they arise. Dr. Davis, Director of Facilities, is here again to answer any questions about this specific project, and we are requesting approval. Thank you, Dr. Corson. Ms. Wanny, may I have a motion to consider approval of purchase from. Current one GPA Cooperative Contract twenty-one oh six P JOC for roofing upgrades at Shadow Mountain High School.
So moved. I'm so glad I have that.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments? Mrs. Christiansen?
Yes. Hopefully in a moment, so. You can get to the mic. Um, my question is, do we have any other roofers in one GPA?
He answered that to that question is yes.
It seems as though we always select progressive roofing and um. Given that job order contracts don't require multiple bids. Is there a reason why we are always selecting progressive roofing at nearly a million dollars a pop each time? We have a lot of roofs in PB.
So we did engage two contractors on this project. Because we do want to work with a variety of contractors. Uh that we have available both through our job order contracts and uh in in the. In the public market. Um, that all being said. We did uh discuss, uh engage and 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 tour the project with with two contractors. Um, this particular project, because of its. Complications with the solar, um, the uh. O- only one company. Decided to engage with us on the project.
And. How does one participate in um if if they're not part of one GPA? How does a roofing company get involved and um? Be able to. Be selected for roofing jobs at PB because there's a lot of roofing companies. I've been interviewing a lot of them with my job because I've. Up to work with a lot of different vendors, so um I'm just curious if you can explain that process.
That's more of a procurement question, and so I would uh like to get back to you on that after consulting with the. Uh Director of Prejudment as to how uh we would engage with a variety of of contractors uh both in and out of of one GPA.
Okay. And so I I do, I've been on the one GPA website and I know that they do um. They do seek lots of different vendors and, you know, I know that that's one avenue, but I was just wondering if. We only go through one GPA because it seems like this name comes up. Quite frequently and um, yes, I, well, I, the work definitely needs to be done. Um, at a million dollars every time they have to fix a roof. Or more, it's. You know, it's a lot of money that goes to one contractor with a no bid.
And again, we. We make effort to engage with a variety of contractors. In this particular job. Progressive Roofing was the recommended vendor for for service.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Dr. Lim?
I just want to clarify, we've had roofing conversations before. This is not the first roof we've talked about, and I think this. If I want to clarify, is this the same roofing company that we recently used at North Canyon and PB High School? And I remember the reason for them was these are such large, complicated projects on very old buildings. That these individuals have experience working in this space continuously, and that was my understanding why. They often are willing to take on our very complicated roofs that would be easier if we were just replacing it, but we've obviously invested in solar panels and have to go a different route.
Yeah, and that is a factor in the decision-making process. Um, Progressive has experience. With roofs with the exact same situation that we're in at Shadow Mountain. Perhaps not to the scale of solar that. That uh that we have at Shadow Mountain, but uh they have had successful projects navigating those solar sleds.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or, Mrs. Christiansen?
Do other diff- districts have roofing concerns?
Do other districts have roofing concerns? Yes, they do.
And do other districts use other contractors besides progressive roofing?
Although I don't know personally, I would imagine, given the variety of vendors out there, that different districts use different vendors.
I think um competition makes us all better and in the future I would really like to see different roofing companies. Come through um if possible because then we get better quotes, even if it is a job order contract. Um, I would encourage maybe somebody like a a large company like maybe Alliance Roofing. or there's several different large roofing companies through the valley. Because maybe, maybe we can save some tax dollars that way.
And again, we did engage another company. Unfortunately, we have a very, you know, competent and successful company doing this current job, but if approved, but we are always looking for other successful vendors to come and join us for the very reasons that you state.
Ms. Wanty.
So what I kind of feel like I hear you're saying is there aren't a lot of vendors, roofers out there, who want to touch this project. Is that kind of fair to say?
This is a complicated project.
It's a complicated project. And I don't know, maybe it would be, it might be helpful, not, again, not to create more work for anybody, but it might be helpful to help us have an understanding of, you know, how, what vendors are even sort of out there that can, that are the appropriate right companies who even can do this scale of work? Because I would imagine that's, you know, if I have a roofing issue, which, well, that's not a thing I have to look into, I'm not going to call the same folks that you do. And I think, you know, and given the complexities of our, of some of the roofing situations that we're talking about, I think make it more sort of tangible for us to understand, like, why you're engaging with certain vendors and not others. And maybe that, because I have no idea, I guess maybe that number is much smaller, right? Just options out there than we would even know of, I would guess, but I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
As I recall, in the One GPA contract, there's a number of vendors listed. But I believe, as you've mentioned previously, they're kind of grouped in different categories of what they are able to provide. And some of them may just be sunshades and some, et cetera. So, you know, we do have a long list. It's just not, and it's comprehensive, but it's not every one of them can do everything we need. And so, but yeah, it seems, it sounds to me that, you know, we're trying to find as, you know, cast as wide a net as we can. And perhaps, you know, the next time the One GPA contract itself is up, it will be even wider. Who knows? Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any extensions? The motion passes for one. That brings us to call to the public. Do we have a video that can be played?
Call to the Public is about to convene. This portion of today's meeting allows the public the opportunity to address the governing board. Although state law does not require that the governing board hold a call to the public, the Paradise Valley Unified School District and its board have chosen to do so because we believe it's important to hear about concerns and issues from our community. While call to the public is not designed to be a discussion, the board is here to listen. Due to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the governing board cannot respond to, discuss, or take any action on items brought up during this time. However, staff members may be directed to get back to you and address individual concerns. As a reminder, the point of this and every board meeting is to accomplish the business at hand and to be able to do so in an open and collaborative way. All in attendance are expected to observe meeting rules as well as rules of politeness and decorum so that we may serve as an example to our students that issues can be discussed in a respectful and civil manner.
Thank you. Tonight, we've had one person who submitted a comment card prior to the start of the meeting, and he will have three minutes for remarks. As a reminder, we ask that you please direct your comments to the board. In case I miss it, please state your first and last name when you come to the podium. And our speaker is Jeff Landay.
Hi, thank you, President Greenberg, and thank you, everyone. I really do appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Landay, and I have two children in the district. I'm sophomore and a senior at Pinnacle High School. And I'd like to speak about a couple of concerns that I have regarding parent-teacher conferences, specifically at that school. I'm grateful for the chance to get engaged with my kids' amazing teachers, but I'm a little concerned in a couple of areas. First, as everybody knows, Pinnacle is a very large high school, and trying to fit all the conferences into an hour and a half is very challenging, especially when you have more than one kid at the school. Oftentimes, we are only able to fit in meeting with about half my kids' teachers. And there was one conference last year when we weren't able to do three. I wonder if somehow we could allow for more time for this event, or given the continued growth of this school, split it into more than one session or something like that. Second, I don't quite understand why more emphasis is not placed on all teachers being present at parent-teacher conferences, which are a very important tool for them and parents to engage about education and their only help twice per year. I work in a support position that supports a large retail organization that has a very large sale once per quarter. Our teams in the field are 100% all hands on deck for these events, which aren't nearly half as important as the education of our kids. And yes, I do understand that most teachers are willing to set up separate meetings with the parents, but it's way more convenient and it's easier for everyone to get all this done at conferences when we're all there. And I do understand that things come up, but this last session my wife and I were at, at conferences, it seemed like a third of the seats were vacant and the teachers weren't there. I'd like to see the district and Pinnacle take a more all-hands-on-deck approach as well to something as important as engaging parents and our kids' education. And just one other side topic I'd like to mention. Is there any reason why we can't shop around as a district for our senior photo company? Everybody uses grads photography. It's the only choice, and they're absolutely outrageous. My family and I are able to get something set up privately for a fraction of the cost. So that's another thing. Once again, I thank you very much always for the opportunity to come up here and speak and raise these concerns. And I hope the board and administration might take my suggestions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are items for discussion. We have a number of first reads for recommended revisions to governing board policies. The first one is a consideration of revisions to governing board policy EB, Environmental and Safety Program. Again, these are all first reads, and I will turn it over to Dr. Corson.
President Greenberg, members of the board, cabinet and guests. As a reminder, the Arizona School Boards Association periodically issues policy updates for participating districts across the state. These updates typically serve to align local board policy with changes to Arizona revised statutes, clarifying existing language, or improve the organization and readability of policy documents. Cabinet members have reviewed the ASBA updates and are presenting the proposed revisions to the governing board tonight as part of the first reading. Ms. Copeland will share the policies she reviewed, including those on behalf of Dr. Holmes, who is unable to be here this evening. Dr. Lindsay and I will present several additional policies. Following tonight's review, we will bring these policies back to the December meeting for approval. I'll begin with policy EB, Environmental and Safety Program. House Bill 2074 amended ARS regarding expansion of purchasing options for school safety programs, expansion of program proposals supporting school officers, expansion of definition for school resource officer, and inclusion of a new term, school safety officer. HB 2074 also added ARS language to include requirements for school districts to develop an emergency response plan and conduct a safety assessment every five years. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this policy recommendation.
Thank you. Does any board member have any questions or comments, Ms. Wanty?
Yes, thank you. So I appreciate the incorporation of all of that information into our policy. So thank you. One thing I do want to note is, in addition to those additions per the new legislative updates, are the recommendation before us is to, within the beginning part of this policy, is to remove indoor air quality under the Facet of Instructional Plan of the District by virtue of educational programs. And I guess I would, as a very strong advocate of indoor air quality, especially in our schools, I would really like to understand a little bit more about why that would be taken out.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Wanty. I believe by the very nature of this particular policy, safety program, that most of the information regarding specific safety programs relative to schools and probably did not include indoor air quality. It probably was a fit issue with this particular one. We also know that the School Facilities Division has guidelines that address indoor quality standards in schools. The Arizona Department of Health, Maricopa County Air Quality Department, and AD, Arizona Department of Occupational Safety and Health also play a role in setting and regulating air quality standards. So I'm thinking that air quality is addressed through those particular standards as opposed to this specific governing board policy.
So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I read this is that there's, when I see the word educational programs, to me, that means there's an instructional intent. So it goes, it seems it would go beyond monitoring, right? Or standardizing or having information about what those standards are. So, so I guess my question is, what, and the other topics in there are fire prevention, driver education, pedestrian safety. I mean, these are, these are also other areas that involve students and safety that we're not looking to remove and that also have policy and standards elsewhere. So, again, I'm just, I'm concerned. I think, I think we don't, I don't think we do enough education around indoor air quality, especially in our schools. If you look at the statistics and the research, there's more and more evidence that we really should be looking at these things more. So I'm just, I'm concerned about removing this in particular, especially within the context of an educational program. It's actually a tremendous opportunity to engage students in, like, real-world problem-thinking, problem-solving, STEAMs. I don't know that we were really, really doing those things before necessarily, but I, it seems that there's also, again, like, that educational piece to this policy.
Does anybody else, I've got a comment. And I apologize because this sort of just hit me. We're, the recommendation is also to remove environmental from the title, but not to remove the section we added on energy conservation. So it feels like we probably need to retain the word environmental. And if we do, I think keeping the, you know, this piece about indoor air quality might make sense. Or we need to consider where we would want to put something about energy conservation. If we don't keep it here. But it feels like we, you know, we remove the reason for keeping it here if we remove the word environmental. So maybe just consistency.
Yeah, we appreciate that feedback. We're happy to take a look at that in preparation for our second meeting.
Does anybody else have any questions about EB? All right, next on the agenda is discussion item I-2, and this is consideration of revisions to governing board policy GCQF, which is Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of Professional Staff Members. And I will turn it over to Ms. Copeland.
President Greenberg, members of the board, this is the first reading for revisions to governing board policy GCQF, Discipline Suspension and Dismissal of Professional Staff Members. The revision includes additional language to define that the superintendent has the right to request information from the Arizona Department of Education regarding allegations of unprofessional conduct against a current or prospective employee. Happy to answer any questions that I can or pass those on to Dr. Holmes for follow-up.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments regarding the recommended changes? All right, go on once, go on twice. All right. No comments here. Next on the agenda is I-3, which is consideration of revisions to governing board policy GDFA, Support Staff Qualifications and Requirements. And I will turn it over to Ms. Copeland.
President Greenberg, members of the board, this is first reading for revision to governing board policy GDFA, Support Staff Qualifications and Requirements. The recommendation, recommended revision updates the policy to align to current minimum requirements as to who is required to maintain a Level 1 IVP fingerprint clearance card per state statute. It additionally removes language about the requirement of bus drivers to maintain a Level 1 IVP fingerprint clearance card, as that language exists in governing board policy EEA/EA, Bus Driver Requirements, Training, and Responsibilities. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have, excuse me, any questions for Ms. Copeland on this policy? Dr. Lim?
I do have a question. It's around this policy and probably around the identification card more generally, because I know this will be a change district-wide to who has to have these cards overall. Where does the cost, who's paying for those cards? Are the employees paying for them, or is we a district supporting the cost of people having these identification cards and going through the process of getting them?
Dr. Lim, I believe that we take on the cost as a district, but I want to check that with Dr. Corson. Is that correct?
Or is there no cost? I assume there's a cost. There's a cost for food handler's card. There's a cost for almost every of these certifications.
Yeah, Dr. Lim, there is a cost for these. And I do believe Dr. Holmes is exploring options for us as a district to support the payment of those. But we'll get some additional information from Dr. Holmes.
I asked just for clarity, because it sounds like we're going to move this down to our certified staff who are already often underpaid for the work that they're doing. And so asking them to then foot that bill, I think, would be a challenge for many of the staff. We may be asking to now have these clearance cards. So it would be nice to obviously see us working through, not losing staff, because they simply have to have this card that they now have to pay for.
Dr. Holmes, Dr. Lim, that is our interest, and I know that's something that Dr. Holmes is working on.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mrs. Christensen. So it's my understanding that as part of the certification process, when a teacher wants to be certified and they contact the Arizona Department of Education, that that is part of it, because they have to pay, they have to pay them for the certification and for the fingerprint. At least when I worked there not too long ago. So I, the districts do not pay for that when they're getting certified, at least the first time. So that was my understanding. So maybe we can get clarification on that.
Ms. Christensen, I'm happy to take that note, and I will get clarification from Dr. Holmes.
Okay. And why was school bus drivers stricken from this? Is it because we're having a hard time getting school bus drivers?
Actually, Ms. Christensen, have a note on this. So we, as a district, so Dr. Holmes had sent out some communication on November 3rd that we are requiring Level 1 IVP fingerprint clearance cards for all employees in Paradise Valley. And this aligns with many of our, what our peer districts are requiring. This policy represents the legal minimum, but we do have the latitude to increase those requirements. We are maintaining the flexibility to revert to this minimum if needed, if we have a reason to do that. But right now, we are going to require this of all employees, including bus drivers.
So I guess I'm confused as to why the language is stricken. Maybe I'm on the wrong policy. Is that?
Didn't you say that it's stricken from here because it appears in a different policy?
Bus driver policy.
Yeah.
Previously, yes, previously it was in the other policy. So that had been stricken, because now the legal minimum is this current policy that you're reviewing.
Okay. I just want to make sure that all drivers are included in this because our neighboring districts got still unified, had an issue with hop, skip, jump, a outsourced organization that provided transportation. And there was, yes, there was some assault there that happened, and it was a very vulnerable child. All children are vulnerable, but I believe it was a special needs kid. So I just want to make sure that everybody is vetted. Everybody that works with or is around children in our district, whether they're driving them to and from, even washing dishes, whatever, I just want to make sure that children here are safe.
Does anybody else? Mr. Pantera?
I was just going to speak to the cost. I remember when I first got my first card, when it first happened, that I had to pay out of pocket for that. I don't know if that's changed or not, but it seems to me employees have always had to pick up the cost of that. And I never liked it, but there it is. It's required by law.
Anybody else on this particular one? Okay, next on the agenda is discussion item I-4, consideration of revisions to governing board policy IHA, Basic Instructional Program. And I will turn it back over to Ms. Copeland.
President Greenberg, members of the board, Dr. Corson, the revisions to policy IAH, Basic Instructional Program align the policy language with recent changes in Arizona revised statutes. Changes worth noting include policy I- Changes worth noting include policy I H A has been revised to reflect the emergency measure approved by the governor in March twenty twenty five, which amended A R S fifteen seven ten point zero two regarding nine eleven education day by specifying that schools serving students in grades seven through twelve must dedicate a portion of the day to age appropriate instruction on the events of September eleventh, two thousand and one. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments on the recommended revisions to I H A? Seeing none, we go to I five. This is consideration of revisions to governing board policy I J N D B, use of technology resources in instruction. And back to you, Ms. Copen.
President Greenberg, members of the board, revision to policy I J N D B, use of technology resources in, uh, instruction align the policy with current statute and update expectations for technology use in schools. Changes worth noting include addition of new statutory language limiting student use of cell phones and, uh, social media during the school day with exceptions for educational use, emergencies and medical need. Um, addition of new policy language on the use of artificial intelligence emphasizing that A I must be teacher directed, actively monitored and aligned with instructional expectations and used responsibly to ensure privacy and student safety. This policy also includes a new regulation. Just to note that, that that would be an innovation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does any member of the board have any questions or comments about I J N D B recommendations? Ms. Wanny?
Thank you. Um, I, I, I think two questions mainly. Um, one is regarding the new, new legislation about the limiting, you know, student use of wireless communication on campuses. I know that a lot of our campuses were doing that before that was even law, which I applaud and I'm grateful for. I guess my question is now that it is, um, now that it is the law, are, is there like guidance or like any recommendations for how, how teachers and sites manage that and do that, or is it kind of more left to, I think, the principals to sort of determine on a, on a site by site basis?
Um, Mrs. Wanny, yes. So, um, we have guidelines that we provide to high schools, but they are all using different. And even before this law, we were, uh, we had strategies in place to limit that because it could be a distraction to learning. Um, now that it is law, each high school has, um, adapted their own strategies for, for when kids enter the classroom and how to put those things away.
Okay, so there's not like, every, there's not a one size fits all. It's kind of different strategies being utilized in different classrooms.
Correct, Ms. Wanny. Um, I don't know about different, they've taken a pretty unified approach as a school.
Okay.
To keep it consistent for students, um, but there was latitude between schools of how they, they wanted to address that.
Okay. And I know, and so you, you mentioned specifically high schools, but this is K through twelve, so middle school, everybody.
Yes.
Okay. And so same kind of answer for everybody?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, if a, if, if a teacher or site was having challenges with managing some of this, they would just, they would, I would imagine the direction would be they would seek discussion with the principal and they could work different ideas, thought how to.
Absolutely, Ms. Wanny. And if, yes, and that, that needed more a thought partner around it, um, uh, we would, they would turn to their supervisor, the principals.
All right. Um, thank you. Um, and then, so we've talked about A I quite a bit. Here and there, and I appreciate, um, kind of having all of this, uh, really important information, including the A I provision within this one policy. And I recognize, um, right, A I is new and continuously changing and we need to sort of be nimble and, and flexible so that we can be responsive. And it might not always make sense to have an incredibly like detailed and specific, robust governing board policy because that wouldn't really be very efficient, right, for us to, as a district, right? Um, so I guess all of that to say, recognizing that, you know, I think this is meant to sort of be very broad intentionally and I appreciate that and I understand that. Are, like, I guess, where are we in terms of, you know, building out guidelines, frameworks, right? That really get into sort, sort of more of the, like, you know, PD or how, right, how to use it best. And again, I recognize this is like an ever-changing topic, like probably tomorrow, there's something new or something different that's come out, right? Or just embedding different A I. I know, I know you guys are, you do a great job. I know, I know, um, I'm gonna, I was gonna say Jeff. Thank you. Mr. Billings, I know, does such a great job of, of vetting that stuff and making sure that, you know, we're not putting any of our students at risk, right? And for our data infrastructure and all that. But I just, it seems like there's so much work in a way, you know, not specific to our district, but just to be done in this space to make sure that, you know, teachers and students are really being supported in this crazy time we're living in with all the stuff that's coming out like every day.
Ms. Wanny, thank you for that question. Um, I'll highlight a couple of things that we're doing. Um, in speaking of like, uh, large scale, like district guidance across all of our schools, um, we do have a standing committee called the I T C, Instructional Technology Committee, um, that convenes every year. And that is our committee that includes parents and all of our stakeholder groups. And so that is facilitated by, uh, Mr. Billings and then, um, his assistant director also. Uh, so their theme this year is A I because it is such a complex, multi-leveled, um, topic. They have tackled that and they will be recommending, um, the guidelines and expectations. Uh, so they have begun working on that, uh, and basically best practices in the district to keep A I very aligned to instruction. And, and because it, it can get, go in multiple ways, but we want to keep it as tied to our instructional standards and things that the, the students have to do in the classroom. Um, we've also done some things like partner, uh, with U P C, uh, working on a upcoming project where we're looking particularly at our high schools because these are our students that are, uh, preparing for post-secondary opportunities. And we know that's going to be a critical part of what they need when they graduate. Um, so we're starting with high schools, um, developing, uh, thing we're calling student A I ambassadors. So they would be working with the I T department and, um, directly and their campus leadership to provide, um, kind of a student layer of helping us navigate A I. Um, often these students are bringing knowledge to us on a daily basis, so we're gonna formalize that into an ambassador position. Another way that we're focusing on, kind of at another layer, is we know that our leaders that have to lead this, our principals at, uh, these school sites have to have a level of understanding as well. So we've dedicated our alt-admin meetings to the theme of A I. Um, what's exciting is we've been trying to bring in keynote speakers to kick off those alt-admin meetings, um, experts in the field. So we just had one in September where, um, Dr. Getson and, uh, Dr. Lindsay, who work with N A U, brought in a keynote called A I in the education space. And N A U is actually one of the frameworks we're using, um, for our district guidance. And we're looking forward to this month, we're going to have Dr. Mashira, who is Director of Innovative Learning at Mary Lou Fulton College. Uh, and he's doing a keynote for A S U education and the A, age of generative A I. So, um, what they're bringing to our leaders is, um, I loved the first one because they were kind of saying, let's not be fearful of it. If there's, it's actually bringing a lot of opportunity and let us show you what that looks like. And I think our second speaker will bring that too. This is just gonna help our leaders embrace it and then be able to lead better, you know, the, the people that they lead. Um, and as you know, we've talked about this, I think, previously, the Conmigo pilot that we are, um, doing through A D E. And we have twenty-four hundred students that are working with Conmigo in grades fifth through eighth grade. And this allowed us to bring A I into a younger age range. Um, and, uh, it is a partnership with, um, Khan Academy. So we felt very confident because we already have that going on. And we have been in the pilot for about a year and this, uh, and then this year as well. And so, um, we're studying that to, to see if that's gonna be a possible, um, option for us going forward after the, the pilot. After, um, A D E is no longer funding it, we'll probably need to make that decision if that's an A I tool. But that's brought us a lot of insight on, on what is needed in those younger grades with younger students who are just learning how to prompt A I to help them in a productive way. And the other thing I might just, uh, highlight here too is along with our A I development and all our plans, this idea of digital citizenship. And so this year we did because we're trying to build up understanding of, um, how to use A I with, uh, you know, keeping, keeping it safe for kids. And then also just being ethical about using it and, you know, avoiding plagiarism and giving it proper credit when we can use it. And so, um, our students K twelve had, uh, digital lessons that were developed by the I T department. They're unrolling those with their students throughout the, the year. Um, A I really kicks in heavily again in the tenth grade. So our tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade teachers will address, um, A I and how it's incorporated in instruction and how we should do things. So those are just a couple of layers that we have been working on.
That's wonderful. And so is the idea that some of this work that the I T C committee is, is working on, like, will be, will some of that be public facing, right? Because I know, like, as a parent, if I'm trying to kind of figure out, well, what is the district's policy? Or, you know, how are we utilizing A I? Or how are we, how are teachers ensuring that students understand what an expectation is? For example, on a particular assignment, right? Like, right, the expectation might be you're not going to, you know, engage with A I at all. Or it might be, right, okay, I want you to use it to research, but I want you to tell me how you do it now. Or maybe I want you to do it without it and then with it, and I want you to, right, whatever that is, like, how are those expectations, I guess, being shared with students? And is there a way for a parent, because I don't think there is now, but is the goal to get to a place where like a parent can go on our web, go on the P P website and have a clear understanding about how, what, what our A I guidelines are?
That is one of the goals of the, um, the team. Uh, one of the parents on the, um, committee has brought, uh, the Scottsdale example to us. So we have been looking at, uh, what they have brought publicly facing, and we hope to have something very soon that, that we're comfortable posting.
That's exciting. Thank you. And also my kiddo, I knew about the Khan Academy because he was piloting it. And, um, I definitely had to have some conversations with him about, don't get into fights with the chatbot. It's not really gonna help you solve your math problems when you get frustrated.
Mrs. Christiansen?
Yes. Um, thank you for the explanations. I am currently taking some classes in artificial intelligence. Do, not just do my own company, but you, um, on my own, continuous learning. And I am doing webinars, so I can do it from, from my own home. I don't have to go out of state to, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist that. Um, however, I, I do have concerns with A I. And I know that, um, Mr. Billings had indicated that it's A I with guardrails. There are no guardrails right now. And the more I learn, um, A I is, is growing and living and the prompts can be done, it can take on my, um, my way of writing and do it in seconds. It can take, I can say, please write this, um, governing board statement in, in terms of Mark Twain, take on the Mark Twain persona and write it. And there, there are no guardrails right now. And it's, it's exciting. And yes, um, those that don't know A I will maybe replaced with people that do. Right now, it's not to the point where we're replacing people, but there are staffing, people are now starting to staff down and replacing a lot of tedious jobs with, with this. But, um, the more I learn, the more I'm thinking. And I'm not fearful. I, I do not live in fear. I'm pretty fearless. But what I'm concerned about with students is critical thinking, critical thinking skills because I can just plop things in and I'm, I'm past Chat G P T now. I've graduated. Um, a little bit past that, but it's, it's incredible. It's exciting. It's also very frightening in, to see it in the education setting so cavalier, you know. And so it's not careless. I, I don't even know the words that, that maybe, maybe the chatbot can help me with the words that I'm trying to get. But what my concern is, is we are, we're removing critical thinking skills. And because the bots now can think like us, they can think faster than us and move a lot more quickly than we ever can. Um, one of the tasks during my training, I had to take very large documents and download or put it into the chat and then it just condensed it in summarized bullet. And it, it was exciting, but in K through twelve, how, how do you test for that? You can't, you can't test for that in terms of, um, you know, cheating and things like that. So I don't, I don't see, I don't see the guardrails. So I'm sorry to be a downer, but I'm concerned. I am concerned.
Ms. Christiansen, if I could, um, address some of your concerns, those are our concerns as well. Um, and so we want A I to be an extension of the human, right? Not the other way around, that we're like the sidekick to that. Um, in, in talking to Mr. Billings and having lengthy conversations about the position we're going to take and, and how we're going to do this. Um, the guardrails we have taken so far is, is up until recent, Gemini has not recommended A I in the classroom under age thirteen. So we have embraced that, um, as far as right now. Uh, the only thing authorized with our, our younger students is Conmigo in the official pilot. Um, not to say that students aren't using that outside of school, we know they are, but as far as, um, Ms. Cope, but this would be considered a definite disruptor in instruction. If you remember back when we got the internet, for those of us that were when that came along, I'm like, I have email now? Um, yes, and that was a disruptor, uh, back in the day. Um, this is definitely a disruptor, which means that instruction will have to change. And that is a slower process to maintain that we understand that kids are critically thinking and they're not leaning on the tool too much. Um, so we are, uh, finding that harmony of what that's gonna look like and what teachers ask students to do. And are there things that we could incorporate A I thinking where we're being critical about what A I? Because that's really, um, it's how you prompt A I. It's not all accurate. Nothing can replace, um, expertise. And, um, sometimes it does not have the multiple perspectives we might be looking for. So teaching kids to be critical of what it's telling you as well, or how it's helping you, is gonna be a skill we're gonna have to develop too.
Yes, and in my testing, I, it's definitely spitting out inaccuracies and, um, information that is untrue. I do have a question on filtering and internet safety. I know we're not making any changes to that um, because we did have a concern that came in from a, a district parent about a approved website, but with the dot something extension, I think, was changed. And students were able to access pornographic material from our district devices. And I'm very concerned how we could close the loop on that with, is that part of this, you know, filtering and internet safety concerns? I, I just am concerned. You know, you give a child a device from a school and you think it's pretty clean and locked down, so.
Yes, Ms. Christiansen, we, we make every effort to, um, have that not happen. I was directly involved with that, that concern coming from that parent. And we, um, had that locked down in about fifteen minutes after he reported it to me. So, um, in fact, we take those, try to respond as quickly as possible. Um, and we are, uh, the vendor that they like mimicked, we are bringing it to their attention as well because, um, the parent is also pretty tech savvy and had brought, um, a situation, uh, where they had done the same thing to the White House um, site, like, again, like whitehouse.com, whitehouse.gov, that they had taken that site and done something similar. I forget what the technical name is, when typo setting or something like that, but it's how things like that get hacked. So we're notifying the vendor as well, just for the safety of all the clients that they work with and the children that they work with. Um, and then we are gonna meet with the parent to, to get, gain his insights if he has any to share with us. But, um, we try to mitigate that as much as we have our filter set very high. Um, as required also by our insurance, they dictate what we have to set things at and we have those all in place. But unfortunately, sometimes this hacking takes place. And, um, we're particularly concerned that this was a, um, resource used by students and children. And so whoever's doing that will worry about that as well. So
Thank you.
We're taking those, those measures.
Dr. Lim?
So I'm gonna take us back to the devices, though the A I conversation is always fascinating. Um, so I know our school day is classified as including meals, passing period, and rainy season. And I know the biggest hurdles have been getting students to keep their devices in their backpacks during that time. Um, and obviously we know devices and the things like social media are built to want us to be on them. Like, that's the entire issue with the current technology devices. They're, they're built for us to want to engage with them. How are we using, say, our digital citizenship to start training kids early on appropriate uses for devices? And how to engage with devices so that they reach a point where they're in high school and passing periods that they don't always go to their device because they've learned the skills to cope with not having their device and being present in the world without having a phone in their face all the time. But if you walk, go past the high school, every time at the end of the day, they come out and they're straight glued to their phone. So how can we help start early with that education process? And how are we already doing that? Because I think we're already doing that to a capacity in the district.
Yes, um, Dr. Lim? Yes, Dr. Lim, great question. And so I think our schools are taking multiple approaches to that. And part of the digital citizenship that I, you know, as I'm recalling all of the the different lessons. Some of the safety pieces are not putting your identity and all that. Social media would be included in that because things are tracked through social media, making sure kids understand that. We've talked about everything online is traceable. We think they might be invisible, but everything at the end of the day probably can. So let's not talk to each other online, that we wouldn't talk to each other in person, lessons like that. Or chatbots, yes. So those are valuable lessons for kids in the A I generation to to definitely learn and the tech generation. So those are, and then, of course, in just instruction, strategies like in our new reading curriculum for K six, we use Socratic seminars. Those are sitting in a circle and talking to each other, eye contact, presentation, all of those skills that they need to be developing on the human side of everything. Those are all being emphasized through like curriculum and strategies like that. We have building thinking classrooms. That's all gallery walks, talking at posters, writing things down. So those strategies are still alive and well in our our instruction and vital because they're evidence based. And they're going to pull out all those critical skills that might disappear when we're using technology.
I think my question just is that it's obviously I want those skills and those are important skills. How much are we helping tie the students to the like growing need? So I'll give you, for example, my kids don't use devices at home. Like, it's it's just I have a nine year old who is the only kid in our class that probably doesn't have an iPad and have access to an iPad or any technology. So my kids have learned that devices are are not our go to use technology. We either use the big T V or we get out a book or we talk to each other, to the degree that I've actually been lectured for being on my phone, even if I'm doing work while at a family like activity. My kids are now teaching me to the things I taught them. So how are we tying these things to the technology that they're using? And helping them understand that the 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 devices all sitting up here being used are great tools and great things, but they're not always necessary for our lives. And these lessons of sitting in these talking circles are not just teaching us good skills, but good skills for us to step away from the things that we see everyone else doing and engaging with. And that we have made a central part of our life, but maybe don't need to be as central as we've made them.
Um, Dr. Lim, just for clarification, are are you asking how we like work with parents to kind of communicate those messages for at home?
I think that might be even my case is because it sounds like all we're doing is sending home a single sheet of paper. And I'll be 100% honest, I get a million sheets of paper that come home from the school and to be able to read every single one in detail. So how are we then say communicating with parents or communicating in the classroom these these novel thought processes that you don't always need to be on your device, which then percolate into them being in high school and then always wanting to be on their device? Which is is a big challenge for everyone.
Yeah, Dr. Lim, that is a very big challenge. And we have worked with our parents in different ways to, from the limitations of screen time. Some organizations have done like what's like in the normal range or what would be, you know, considered per age, you know, what they should be doing. I know different P T O organizations at the schools have taken some different approaches and they've had some different methods of communicating with their communities. And then I T C, I'm sorry, not I T C, U P C, our, you know, I T department works closely with them. We just did a presentation on the digital citizenship, and then that is shared with with all the P T Os. And they have asked for the materials to access. And so we are working on making those same lessons that teachers are using in the classroom available for our parents so that they can use them at home to help them talk to their students. And some of those will be on the screens and and using technology and not letting it dominate their time. You know, like you being present and things like that. So we're making that available to our parents. Give them the language and the resources to be able to talk to kids at home.
Great. I I would love to see as these policies happen, see that coupled work happening to help get this information out to parents. Because it seems like, oh, now we're saying they can't use devices in this way, like working. But there are rationales underlying this and reasons why these are happening. And helping educate the parents, I think, is really important, too, because sometimes we're not always knowledgeable as to why something is happening. But that information coming to us through multiple venues helps us understand and grow as well as parents. So, because I'm a parent and I'm not perfect, so.
Does anybody else have?
Okay, I've got a general comment, this for Ms. Copan. But under, we had a recommendation is to change, for example, parent notifications, just notification, which makes sense because we're expanding who will be notified. And I would just, in in generals, I would like to see as if we can expand beyond parents because certainly we have legal guardians that, you know, we we need to acknowledge that that we that there are legal guardians beyond parents. And so just in general, and I'm just seeing it here right now. So it's like, I'm remembering that I sent this note to Dr. Carson that, you know, if we can work on these things as policies come through to ensure that we're we're doing things like that. Another piece, several years ago, when we overhauled and went through every policy by policy. At the time, we sort of talked about as a board, the decision to make policies our own where we could, where it made sense to, you know, bring this into, this is what we do in P D U S D. It's not, you know, when when A S B A sent these out, it's it's very much, it's generic because it needs to be generic. And so where there's places where we might, rather than just say the district, bring it into the language that says the Paradise Valley Unified School District. And if there's anything beyond that, because it's the Paradise Valley Unified School District, that we can do that. You know, oftentimes, a policy will come from A S B A that mentions charter schools. Sometimes I think it makes sense to to keep that in there as an educational piece that that people looking at our policies may understand that this is extensive, that all districts and all charters may have to do that. But there are times where that, you know, why would we mention charter schools in the policies that are? So that's just a general comment. It just, you know, tweaked my memory because this one specifically is is removing the word parent in one place for good reason. But I just think, you know, in general, as as policies come to us, if we can sort of start adopting that, I'd like to see that. So that's, that's just my general comment. Does anybody else have anything on, which one is this again, I J N D B? Seeing none, thank you. We move to consideration of revisions to governing board policy I K F graduation requirements. And again, it's Miss Copan.
President Greenberg, members of the board, Dr. Carson, revisions to policy I K F graduation requirements. Bring the policy into alignment with recent changes in Arizona revised statutes. Changes worth noting, including adding statutory language describing the procedure when a student already has an official score from a state board approved test, nationally recognized assessment such as A C T or S A T. How the policy explains how the district must document and report that score. Clarification that the statewide assessment may be administered in a written format only in specific situations permitted by statute and requires statutory language regarding county operated accommodation schools and their ability to provide a high school equivalency preparation alongside a C T program. We have also updated reference five in this policy to recognize the A D E allowable embedded credit for the point five economics credit that we approved earlier tonight. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Copan. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the proposed revisions to I K F?
I would just echo your comments, President Greenberg, about personalizing this. For us, it looks like this one's got a lot of more just generic, you know, district, district or charter. So just seems like I'm just highlighting it as a follow up to what you just said.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we move on to, I'm sorry, open a page, I seven. This is considerations of revisions to governing board policy J L C Student Health Services and Requirements. And I will turn over to Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you, President Greenberg, members of the board, policy J L C Student Health Services. Just myself here. Policy J L C Student Health Services and Requirements, Senate Bill 1383 amended A R S Title 15, Chapter 1, Article 5, by adding A R S 15 dash 160.03, which requires schools that provide routine healthcare services to students provide healthcare credentials and to schools to provide emergency response training information upon request of a parent or guardian. In P B schools, this would include our school nurses. A R S 15 dash 160.03 does not require schools to release personally identifiable identifiable information of school employees or healthcare providers. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on J L C? Is this Ms. Oh, sorry, Ms. Wani?
Well, I guess I just, and I might just be getting tired, admittedly, but so for I, for example, is there a reason why we feel like we would need to include that in the policy? If, I mean, we know that it's law, but I mean, is that is, if 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 a parent or someone was asking for that information, it seems like it would just be appropriate to say, you know, under the law, like, that is not something that would be appropriately shared with you. Is there a reason to actually explicitly, I guess, state that particular provision within within this policy?
I I think it comes right from the statute.
Like, does it, but does it have to be in our policy?
Well, the A S B A takes the statute and then applies it to the policy. So I think that's why it's in there.
I don't know. Just something to think about is, I don't know. I I it seems like if we have updates in in the law, there are updates in the law, we're gonna follow the law. And I guess just in thinking about in terms of, obviously, that's how we would respond if it came up. But I guess I just wonder, do we need to explicitly include it in as an update in our policy, even though that is, you know, that's the law?
Well, let me go to Mr. Pantera, I think it's nice.
Well, yeah, on H, where they can request the type of training staff has had, the required train. Is that like include that video on bloodborne pathogens, all this stuff, all the teachers take in the district? That's included in that, too?
Our lead nurses maintain a spreadsheet of all of the required emergency response training. And so if a parent requested that information, we would be able to provide that to them.
I see. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Christensen.
I have similar concerns as Ms. Wani did with I. Because it states here, a school district or charter is not required to release the personal personally identifiable information of a school employee or an individual who provides routine healthcare services to students, including the employees or individuals' address, salary, social security. While I agree that information is not, you know, especially the bottom one. I'm concerned that we have one of the strongest parental rights bills in Arizona. And parents are the ones that have the right to direct the education, education, health, mental health of their own children. And so why are parents, why is the district not required to release information about who is treating their child? The the way it's worded just bothers me. Individual who provides routine healthcare services to students. Are they, is a parent or guardian allowed to know that? Because they have to have parental consent, correct, to be able to treat?
Yeah.
Or am I incorrect?
Yes, and we would provide their, it's directory information, so they would know who the individual is and and they can request their credentials. And we're talking about more specifics about the individual employee.
Right, because that stuff is private. And I agree with that, but
It's kind of confusing.
The wording is not clear.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Does anybody else have? Okay, since we're talking about I, I actually think it is appropriate to keep information in. But I think if, you know, as Mrs. Christensen just pointed out, it may not necessarily be clear. And then we probably should take a look at it so that it's understandable that this is information we are not giving out because it's personally identifiable as opposed to the information we can. I mean, I personally have that that issue, but it's obvious that that we might need to make this a little stronger in terms of what we can as well, we can't. Anybody else on J L C?
So I would just, my my suggestion would be, if you look at the statute, the statute says, on request by a student's parent or guardian, each school district or charter that provides routine healthcare services to students in the school's health office shall provide the healthcare credentials. To me, I think that's all we need. I don't think we need to say, but we're not gonna tell you their salaries, right? That's just the law. We're not, we're not gonna do that. And we can cite the law if it's requested. Otherwise, it just is feels like it's not really appropriate, right, to be in our policy.
I looked at it as more of an informational piece, which is, if you ask for information, this is the information you can get. This is information you can't get. So it's more of a, don't ask because it's not, you're not gonna get it. That that's the way I looked at it. Not not that, you know, just a yes for this, no for this. But I don't, I I I can understand it not being there.
Just because if you look, if we look at what it, what the topic is, right? Which is, it's not just like for it for requesting information, right, about employees. If it specifically relates to, and I can't, because I have so many tabs open, even finds what it is, but things, student health services, right? So the information should, I think, relate to student health services. And then the additional guidance, right? And that's now, well, not guidance, the law, I think, is appropriate. But I don't know that it seems appropriate to me that it would be under this policy. I think it creates some confusion and it's a little strange to me.
Don't disagree with that. Dr. Lim.
I just have one clarifying question, just to understand in more detail. So are all of our nurses onsite, are they direct employees? Or do we have any nurses that are contract workers that are working for us? Because this seems directly to employees. And if we have contract workers as nurses, that seems like there's a question there.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Lim. We do have nurses, some that are contracted when we aren't able to fill those positions. And so our expectation would be those contract agencies work within our policies as well.
Okay, because it seems like we we then don't have the clarity here because it says specifically employees and does not account for contract workers. And I'm glad you clarified because my understanding was, yes, that we had contract nurses and that this would only apply to. And it'd be good to know, does this only apply to our employees? So contract workers are on a different set of regulations? Or does this policy apply to any nurse that's in our school? If so, we need to clarify that contract workers, contracted nurses may be on site providing healthcare as well. Thank you.
Actually, I don't think it does say only employees because it does say credentials of each individual who provides routine healthcare, et cetera.
Got it.
And then the third one, if we keep it, still says school employee or an individual who provides routine. So I think, I think that it's in there. Mr. Pantera?
Well, yeah, I have a different concern with I. It says this, school district is not required to release the information. It complies that they may do that, which I don't think we should be allowed to do a period.
Right. So this is where I think this is kind, this should be sort of a case by case basis. And the law exists to allow districts to make, I think, have to some discernment and make an appropriate decision here. That's why I think it's, again, sort of oddly placed within this policy. And I would agree that it's like, just, it's it's, it's just, and to your point, too, it's confusing.
Well, it sounds like this one's gonna get another go around before we say it again. Does anybody else have any comments about? All right, next is I eight. And this is consideration of revisions to governing board policy J L C D medicines and administering medicines to students. And back to Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you. Yes, Senate Bill 1440 amended all of those era statutes that you have in front of you to replace the term epinephrine auto injectors with epinephrine delivery systems. Epinephrine delivery systems include the auto injectors, but also now include manual injections, which are either in vials or syringes or a nasal spray, often referred to as naffy. There is an accompanying regulation that operationalizes this policy, and I'm happy to answer any question.
Does anybody have any questions on?
Does anybody have any questions on this?
Just a comment. I, I think it, it adds clarity to that because it's updating old language. And so I, I approve of this type of change because it makes it more concise.
Anybody else on this one? All right. Next is I nine. This is consideration of revisions to governing board policy JLF, reporting child abuse, child protection. And turn it over to Dr. Carson.
Thank you, President Greenberg. Senate Bill fourteen thirty-seven amends ARS language relating to mandatory reporting. Although policy JLF already requires board members to report conduct of all minors subject to mandatory reporting, additional language has been included to ensure alignment with Senate Bill fourteen thirty-seven. Definitions and headings were added to also improve the clarity to this policy. In addition, ARS fifteen dash one sixty point zero three provides guidelines on required identification from the Department of Child Safety caseworker at a school visit. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry. Does anybody have any questions on JLF? See everybody looking? Nope. All right. Next is, oh, Mrs. Christensen.
Just in general, um, I know that the district employees, as well as the governing board members, tooks, took some mandatory classes online for mandatory reporting. And I'm, I'm concerned that people are, district employees are fearful to report incidences. And I'm wondering if there's a way for us, for us to make sure that, that they know that it's safe and that it's not only safe to report if a child is getting harmed, but it's their duty and by law they have to do it. Because it seems we've had a number of whistleblowers that have, I need to be very careful with my words here. We, we have had concerns of students being harmed in one way or another. Um, some of them sped children, some of them other children, inappropriate things that would fall under the heading of child abuse and child protection. So how can we instill in all of our educators that they not only should report, but they have, have a duty and they must report if they see any, or suspect so that it can be investigated? Um, my, my concern is coming from being a mom and hearing things time, you know, over and over again, and it's, and being on this governing board for the past three years. There's been a number of things that have been reported and then that individual may go away. But we need to ensure that, that these individuals are being reported to law enforcement and the State Board of Education, if they in fact are harming their children or if somebody suspects. Because that way somebody outside of the district can investigate and either clear their name or ensure that this doesn't happen again to another child in another district or another school. So this one's kind of near and dear to me. And, um, I just, I just want to ensure that we are following this. And how, how can we help the, help any employee understand that? How, how important this is to, to report?
Ms. Christensen, I, I certainly appreciate that advocacy. Student safety is absolutely our number one priority. And we take incidences that are reported to us allegations very seriously because a, a child is our number one priority. And so, uh, I appreciate that concern. And, uh, we do follow all processes required in terms of reporting to, uh, agencies as well as ADE when situations arise. And they certainly are unfortunate. We never like when they happen. But we take those very seriously when they do. And we work to prevent those at, at every opportunity that we can, including providing training to our staff. So thank you for that advocacy.
Yeah, we'd just like to say that every year that my forty-three years here teaching, one of the requirements is child safety mandatory workshop, uh, and presentations you have to go through. I even taught, uh, I was in charge of a summer school, gift to summer school at Eagle Ridge. At one time something, like something happened on the playground. And I had the training abilities to make sure that was reported correctly to the police first, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down the line. And that child was safe. Um, it's never been a situation where we've never looked at that or had the training for it. And I've never known a teacher who's been afraid to step up and say, hey, I think something wrong with this kid. And, and they made sure it happened, the, the proper procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Pantera. Does anybody have, anybody else have any comments or questions on JLF? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is item one, excuse me, I ten. Consideration of revisions to governing board policy J L I F, sex offender notification first trained. Dr. Carson?
Policy J L I F has been revised to include revisions to ARS thirteen dash thirty-eight twenty-five, including the addition of level one sex offender information and an additional notification requirement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments on J L I F? Straightforward. Okay. Seeing none. We are at the end of our consideration with I eleven. Uh, the consideration of revisions to governing board policy J R, student records. Dr. Carson?
Uh, thank you, President Greenberg. Under this recommendation, House Bill twenty-five fourteen amends ARS language relating to parental involvement in schools and student directory information. Policy J R and also regulation J R have been updated to ensure compliance with the new requirements. Subheadings were added to the regulation to also support clarity and organization. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on the proposed revisions to J R? Ms. Wani?
Um, so under the new language for the directory information, um, I'm, so I'm assuming that this is like site based typically directory information?
Uh, in for, uh, can you expand on that question, Ms. Wani?
Like, is this, are we talking about like at a, at a, like a, an elementary school and they have a directory? And they, this is where, this is that what we're talking, we're not talking about like a district. What we're talking about each school that has its own directory?
Well, Ms. Wani, directory information is collected through each school through what we call an annual update, which gives parents typically at the very beginning of the school year, an opportunity to update, uh, information regarding directory information. Although that information for that ability to update that information is all year long. We do certainly make a push at the beginning of the year to do that. And that push is made at each school level. We do at the district level have access to that information, but it is created at the elementary or middle or high school levels.
Okay. And so if, and so in A two, where it discusses, uh, the right of a, I guess, again, here I should say, right? The right of a guardian or eligible student to refuse, um, the school's, does it need? And where, so where, how would a parent indicate their refusal?
At the point of that annual update that I spoke about, that oftentimes is pushed out at the beginning of the year. It's in that, uh, timeframe that they indicate, uh, that particular, uh, request.
Is that the same, like the little, there's like a checkbox and is that the same checkbox as like the media checkbox?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, I, I, I would like to circle back to that. But if there are any other, that checkbox, but if there are other questions about this, I will pause.
About directory information?
Or any, any of the policy?
Well, yeah, I mean, if I'm, if I don't want my students, my child, my students' information shared with anybody, I check that off. That, that protects it from being, the government can't request that information about my, my child, right?
That's correct. We do not release that information as a district if that is checked.
Okay. If I decide to come and want to get all the names of these students and I've got that checked off, they won't get my information about my child, right?
Correct. Right. Thank you.
So in essence, um, you know, I'm, I, I've had kids who, who were here a while ago where we, we had physical directories.
Right.
And I don't know if schools still do that or classrooms still do that. But this encompasses everything, not just a physical directory, but a virtual directory.
That's correct.
Okay. So if somebody says no, that applies across the board.
That does. You are correct. President Greenberg?
Okay. So that kind of goes a little bit to just where I wanted to dig in a little bit. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, and it's been a while since I've paid super attention to those little boxes. But there seems to be like a lot that is encompassed under that checkbox, right? So like, if you don't want your child to be on district, right, or like social media, right, or things like that. Um, and it also seems like this is encompassed in that as well. And we're, if we're thinking about, um, you know, site based sorts of, uh, sharing of either like photos or names or it's, it's the kid's birthday versus, you know, like a district wide, uh, awesome, you know, photos on social media. Is there a way for a parent to differentiate and make different choices? Because I, you know, I could see reasonably a parent saying, I want to be in the site directory. I want to be, you know, I want to be able to be contacted, right? I'm good with that. I don't want my child on or photos in any of the, of like district or school social media. But I do want, I do want my child's like photo to be able, to be in the yearbook, right? So I, is there a way we can help parents in a way that is not, you know, confusing or burdensome, right? Cause I understand we're trying to sort of streamline some of this stuff and make sure we're not messed. Cause these are, you know, these are serious implications, right? If a parent is trusting us to ensure that their data and their child is protected. But is there a way for, for parents to make different choices there so that they can still feel like if they want to be more involved and give more, um, relief at the site, right, but limited to that?
Uh, Ms. Wani, I do understand the interest in that. And we would need to look at how we collect that information to see what the implications of that would be for us to manage that particular system uh, in terms of being able to differentiate between different requests like that to ensure that we don't make a mistake in that.
Because, because was, I mean, correct, is that correct right now? It's, it's like, kind of like the one box and it's like.
I believe so. I don't believe that we currently differentiate. Mr. Drogeek, is that something you might have information on?
I've limited, uh, knowledge because our department does use two of those boxes. I, I believe there are four. One is in district advertising, uh, essentially. The other is out of district. One is the release of directory information to educational institutions. And one is the release of directory information to, uh, like the military.
So it just seems like maybe, maybe there just could be a, a site based sort of differentiation. Cause I, I would imagine most, I mean, most parents I sort of know or talk to that are making the decision that they don't want the release. It's, it's not, they don't want, not want their child to have, you know, their photo in the yearbook or photo, right? Or photo in the, you know, media center at the school, right, or be in a directory. Usually it's, it's those, it's most of the other bigger things. And they don't necessarily realize the implication, I think, of checking those boxes. And there can be some kiddo disappointment, especially in the elementary school level.
We'll be happy to gather some additional information on that.
Does anybody else have any? Dr. Lim?
Sorry, just like a clarifying question. So on, uh, A three, um, it says a period of time within which a parent or eligible student must notify the school in writing. Is that this checkbox that we're referring to? And, and if it is the checkbox after we've done that and don't remember how to get back to that form, do we have a place where parents can go to, to engage the district without literally having to write something down formally and submit it to be able to change that during the school year?
Yeah, that annual update can be updated at any point in the school year. We do call it an annual update because we do make a push at the beginning of the year to try to do that within the first couple of weeks of the school year. But that's actually accessible all year long to parents. So when parents want to make a change, the school will often direct them to back to that same site where they can make that change.
Okay. So if they were to approach their school site and say, hey, this policy says I have to get it in writing, they can point you back to that checkbox and be like, you don't actually have to submit a written letter to me. You can actually return to that checkbox and our employees, at least our staff, our front office employees would be able to assist with that, right?
That's correct, Dr. Lim.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarity.
Mrs. Christensen?
To Dr. Lim's point, um, when we're cleaning up the, the parent, adding guardian information, must notify the school in writing or online, can we, can we clarify? Because writing to me is a curse of writing.
Like the, the way I read it.
But I'm older than dirt. So that's what I, when I read writing. Um, but it does not imply online checkbox. So just to make it accurate.
All right. Anybody else on this last one? Seeing none. Thank you. And thank you, everybody who stayed for that. Um, before we adjourn, I would like to remind you, the next regularly board meeting will be held on December eleventh, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. Ms. Wani, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you.